Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular Tuesday, August 1st, meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Let the record reflect that all members of the commission are present. The meeting is called to order, and we will begin our meeting this evening with a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, and if you'll stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. That brings us to a segment for planning commissioner announcements. Are there any announcements from the commission? No. Seeing none, then, we will move on to a public comment period. This is a general public comment period where you can speak to the commission on any topic you would like to address. I would point out that we will also have opportunities for public comment in association with items B1 and C1, if there are people who would prefer to address those items at that time. So with that, come forward, give us your name, and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. I'm Robert Cogdall. We have a little home on Surf Street here we bought in 2012, and we have a request. We walk everywhere in Morro Bay, and right down here at the museum where these rescue submarines, we'd like to see a crosswalk marked through there. There is no place to cross from beach out into the power plant. There is no place to cross that road. And people, by the hundreds, do it every weekend. And at least if we had the markings and a sign, walkway, if they hit you, you'd be dead right.
Sounds like a good idea. Thank you.
Well, yeah, and just a quick, we use these steps all the time, and they're a heart-killer.
Yeah.
But they're getting pretty rickety. And I know it's been brought up before, maybe it's on a back shelf someplace, but we're hoping they'll redo them.
You're a brave man.
Okay. But we think Morro Bay is the greatest little town on the coast, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Street signs.
Anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, then, we will close public comment, bring it back to the planning commission. We have no presentations this evening, so that brings us to the consent calendar, which consists of two items, the current advanced planning processing list and the minutes for our meeting of June 20th, 2017. Are there any comments on either item, or anyone who would like to pull either item? If not, do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I move that we accept the consent calendar. I'll say it.
Very good. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. 401, sorry. So then we will move on to our public hearing item for this evening. This is item number B1, case number UP 0-465, concerning a property at 462 Arbutus Avenue here in Morro Bay, and I believe that Joan is going to give us the staff report on this one.
Thank you, Chairman Teft, and good evening, commissioners. So the project before you is the continued review of a proposed addition to a nonconforming single-family residence at 462 Arbutus. It was originally heard at the March 21st Planning Commission meeting. I would also like to point out that staff did receive communication from the neighbor in the rear. The copies are available on the table, and you have copies up on the DS. And basically, that communication was thanking the applicants and the commissioners for hearing their concerns about the residential use of the unit in the back. Okay, so moving on. The property is located within the R1 S2 single-family residential zone. It's outside of the coastal commission appeals jurisdiction. It lies to the east of Kern, west of Kings, south of Pacific, and north of Ridgeway. The existing residence is considered nonconforming with regard to the rear setback. It has 2 feet 7 inches where 10 feet is the requirement, and it's also slightly substandard with regard to the 4-foot 10-inch setback on the side where 5 is the requirement. This is the existing site. The project was continued from the March 21st meeting with direction to the applicant to provide greater articulation to the project's front elevation, and the commission, as well as the rear neighbor, expressed concern related to the potential residential use of the existing studio and garage space at the rear of the lot. This is the, oh, this is the existing site, pardon me. Sorry. It's funny. The existing first-floor plan, this one, my slides got a little bit messed up. The existing first-floor plan shows the residence to the right and the detached garage and studio space to the left. The applicant now proposes no changes to the parking situation or to the rear structure, which will remain detached from the primary residential structure at the front of the This is the proposed site plan and floor plan. The applicant's now proposed to add a 389-square-foot, single-story addition and 196 square-feet of exterior decking to the existing 1,724-square-foot residence. The parking situation, again, will remain unchanged with the single-car carport that has the single-car garage door at the front, which is utilized to access the two-car garage in the rear. This is the proposed second-floor plan that shows the proposed decking at the front of the structure, as well as the proposed rooftop deck on top of the single-story addition at the rear. The 3D renderings help to clearly illustrate the proposed revisions to the front elevation, which include additional windows to the second floor, two gabled roof features, a recessed portion of the upper floor at the northwest corner, and the expansion of the second-floor deck to the south. This was the original front elevation as proposed to the planning commission at the March 21st meeting. You can see clearly a significant difference to the front elevation. So, again, the front and rear elevations as they are now proposed. The proposed south and north elevations. It's also important, I guess, at this point to point out that the applicant is, as a condition of approval, a deed restriction will be required that prohibits the residential use of the rear structure unless and until the required coastal development permit is obtained. So therefore, it's staff's recommendation that the planning commission approve the requested conditional use permit for the proposed addition by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 20-17, again, subject to those findings and conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I open it up for questions for staff, I'm going to ask if anyone has any ex parte communications to disclose with regard to this project. So seeing none, are there any questions for staff at this point? Joe?
So I was assuming that with respect to the garage and studio, that typical repairs like to the roof or termite fumigation would be normal things, but if you wanted to add a window or move a door, that that would once again come to the community development office, something like that?
Correct. They would be required to get a building permit for changing doors and windows and things of that nature, and then they will get routed to the planning department.
And then the only other question, I was, yes, I sort of like to think in terms of the long term, so should the property ever be sold and there was another applicant who perhaps wasn't quite as observant, and I must stand from the reading that a violation would be a misdemeanor? What sort of penalties, do you know, are associated with a misdemeanor violation?
Well, we have two processes. One, we can take them to court to rectify the situation if they were, sort of, if they refused to do it, or we could find them. And typically what happens, though, is when we, you know, we find violations of the code or violation of permits that were issued in the past or what have you, is we notify the applicant, we give them, the property owner, and we give them a certain amount of time to rectify that. And normally, we get compliance, because it's usually fairly clear that they violated the permit requirements that were in place, and we give them options for how they might otherwise permit it, if they can. If they can't, then they're directed to remove whatever the, you know, offending addition was, and normally, we gain compliance. And if we didn't, then, the fine mechanisms that we have are really, I don't think, all that useful, depending on what the violation is, to obtain compliance. It's usually, if we can't get compliance and they're not doing anything, it's probably better just to take them to court to get the judge to order them to comply.
Okay, thanks.
Scott, this is, they're not proposing this, but with the changes in state law for the ADU and our secondary dwelling unit codes, we're not in compliance, as far as I understand, with the new state requirements. Where are we with that? And?
Well, we, as we're updating our zoning code, which is part of the general plan LCP update process, at the tail end of it, we'll be updating the zoning code, and we'll have the up-to-date secondary unit ordinance. It'll be consistent with state laws. It stands right now, we default to the state where our ordinance differs from the states. But there are portions of our existing and current ordinance that are not at odds or that do not conflict with state ordinance that we can also still use, and so we do use those. So it's a little bit of a combination of things right now, and then we will have it all wrapped up into one when we're done with the zoning code update.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
Scott, if they would appeal and get the capacity to use the studio as a unit of some type, are we okay parking-wise, or is there a parking exception that shows up?
So, yeah, the secondary, the secondary units, the legislation for secondary units now doesn't require parking if you're within a half-mile of a transit stop, which pretty much covers any place in town. So it wouldn't be a required parking space based on that.
So, Scott, if Morro Bay subsequently amends its ADU ordinance to comply with the state, and we have the existing state law now, but there is a deed restriction on the property, which controls?
So the way we write our deed restrictions would be up until they gain approval from the city for the secondary unit. So we'll put a deed restriction on it, saying that they can't, you know, utilize it as a secondary unit, and at the end of that deed restriction, it'll say unless they otherwise get one approved through the city. So, and potentially, at some point in the future, they could come and ask for that, they make that request, and if they were to be successful, then it could be used for a secondary dwelling unit.
And is that phrase required? I mean, what if that phrase isn't there? Then which one controls?
Likely, we would still be able to move forward with an approval that does that. It just makes it messier on the side of the owner, because it's, you know, it would be considered a cloud on the title if you have it written and there's no, we put that clause in there because there's the potential that somebody could come forward and gain approval for something like a secondary unit there. And so if you did that and it didn't have the language at the end, it's clear that the city recognized that, no, you can't do this, up until the city approves something later. And it makes it clear that the subsequent action takes away the deed restriction. If you don't do that, then sometimes people have issues getting financing and things because you have competing approvals, and so that's why we like to do that. It really is for the deed restrictions to sort of protect the public out there that's in the city from having that issue, because it's come up a few different times, I guess, in the past. So, I haven't had personal experience with it, I just know others that have, so.
Okay.
Could you, I'm reading this letter that was left with us here, and then the language about the deed restriction and the law that changed, I wasn't aware of that state law, and appreciate that was brought up. But I'm trying to understand what, what exactly, can you expand on the letter that we gave here and kind of, and kind of like, should I read it so people can understand what I'm talking about?
You can if you wish. I mean, ultimately, the letter, you know, requests some additional language to the condition that we have, but the condition's not what we record against the property. We have a deed restriction that we've vetted through our city attorney's office that works for these types of things. And so I would, my recommendation as it relates to the requested language would be, we would suggest that you not add this on to it, because it, again, the language we have is well-vetted through the city attorney's office and serves the function of prohibiting that structure from being used for the purpose, for the purpose of some sort of habitation up until the time that they gain approval to do that. So, and it works well, and it's, again, something that, we don't put that, we could put the language, I guess, in here. We don't typically do that, we just have the condition that says we're going to implement a deed restriction that does what the condition says, tells us to go do.
Okay, okay. So, basically, you're covering it?
And it does, and our deed restriction does all the things that the letter requests.
Yeah, okay.
It just gets a little funky when you start adding
Yeah, yeah.
...language to conditions if the expectation is we're recording that, because that's not what we're recording.
Yeah, yeah. Whenever a lawyer gets involved, I get confused, you know.
That's the purpose. Are there any other, if there are no other questions, then, we will open this up for public comment. We typically invite the applicant or applicant representative to speak first if they would like to do so.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Bob Kreiser from Los Osos, and basically, the project has been adjusted to meet issues that were brought up by your commission when we visited here last, and we believe that we've done a good job of tuning up the front elevation, and we've left the nonconforming structure as is, so hopefully, and on our request, that you would approve this and let us go forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak to this issue?
I'm Bob McKay. I'm the fellow who wrote the letter and had the extra information in there, and it's been actually fairly well-covered. I think everybody has seen the language that I would like to see added to it. The heart of mine was the paragraph where it talks about homes change hands, and what were you talking about here? What happens in the future really matters to us, because somebody else can buy this thing and sneak in whatever they want to sneak into. So maybe it is overkill, I'm talking about in the language, but I'd like to see it. It would also be good, perhaps, to see, for the planning commission to see this before it actually went out finally, so you could see how it actually was. We would certainly like to see the deed restriction in its final form and comment on it, because it really concerns us greatly, because we're only, what, 7 feet 6 inches from the back of this wall, and we're pretty intimate with it, and it concerns us greatly. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? With that, then, we will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Michael, why don't you start us off?
Well, I appreciate the changes to the work. I'm at a loss about what to say about the back, because my guess is that unit, no matter what happens to the front, since it's now disengaged from the house, becomes a secondary unit, and there's a whole second flow of discussion relative to the new legal changes and things like that. I don't know how we can restrict something that we know in the law eventually says they potentially have a right to do that.
There's actually, I mean, that was not how the project was approved. They could come forward with an application and request that that be a secondary dwelling unit if they wanted, and they'd have to go through a process for that.
Right.
You know, clearly, the structure, you know, as was pointed out at our previous meeting, doesn't meet separate requirements, and I don't think ever really intended to be a residential structure necessarily. Unclear, actually, to me. But anyway, they would have to go through that process, and they could. But that's, right now, as it stands right now, they're saying, hey, we have this detached, you know, structure at the back, we're saying, okay, well, it could be used for residential purposes, so we're going to put a deed restriction on it, saying you can't do that, you can use it as a shop or studio space for, you know, art or whatever you're doing, but you can't use it for habitation. And so that's basically what the deed restriction does, and if they were able to get some approval at some point in the future, that's fine, and the neighbors would have every right to come forward, as when we noticed it, to voice their concerns if they had them, so.
No, I don't disagree with the way it's worded or what's in there. I just don't know about doing anything in addition, because my sense is it's a fairly thin protection, based on what my understanding is of the other laws.
So what would happen if, I mean, that's actually, it's actually a fair point, and one that the neighbor raises, is, you know, well, change his hand, someone else comes in there, and they didn't read their title report and don't know there's a deed restriction. What happens? They move people in there, and it's noisy, and the neighbor, you know, finds out about it. What do they do? Well, they call us, and then we go investigate it, we see that there's a deed restriction, and we go through a code enforcement process to remove folks from living in the structure. I mean, that's just how it works. I mean, it's standard.
No, I understand the, I understand the short-term benefit. The construction long-term, I don't understand how, if someone would wish to pursue that, I don't understand how it holds it up, if they would pursue the legal mechanism to turn it over.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
I guess, in the abstract, if the state law is saying you can have a secondary structure, it's pretty clear the current city restrictions would not let it be a rental, like a short-term piece, but a longer-term, you know, workforce housing kind of thing, which we've advocated. I don't see how in court, something like the deed restriction would overrule what's a right.
Well, it's only a right if you go through the appropriate approval process.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying, it would seem to me that going through the appropriate approval processes in the long term would not be a very hard thing to do.
Well, but the city could hold them and say, you know, that structure is nonconforming with regard to setback, and we're not going to allow you to put it there, which is a completely valid reason to deny the request for a secondary unit if the city wanted to do that. It also could recognize the structure is existing and say that it's okay. Our code currently doesn't really speak to the specific issue that we have there, and, but it could allow it or disallow it, depending on how, I mean, right now, it's sort of a gray area, just because we don't have the current ordinance in place, but.
Well, as a building code issue, it's a fire setback issue that's got complications and costs for construction. It would be challenged for anything that would use windows and things like that.
Correct.
They also have a fire rating restriction, no matter what they would do. I imagine even now, it would be something.
I think all of those things would apply.
Yeah. No, that's my only concern, is I don't think that, I'm happy to listen to what my colleagues say, but I don't think there's any ironclad way to stop future development of that unit, should they choose. But that's not really what's germane here, which is the revision to the plan. I think it's a much better design, the interior, I think is actually very nice, and so, those are my comments.
Richard?
Yeah, I don't have much to say, other than I think that the owner did a good job on taking what was recommended and implementing it. I think Commissioner Lucas articulated what was, as far as the back unit, much better than I could, but, yeah, there is those, there is that concern. I guess I need to study that new state law a little bit more. But, yeah, I think that as far as this project goes, I like it. I think it's going to be okay.
Jerry?
Well, Commissioner Lucas had similar concerns of mine in the future, but we're still, you know, if somebody wants to change the use of that, they still have to come before us or go through the staff to get, because it's a nonconforming use, and it's also nonconforming for the setback, so they're going to have to address that, either bring it to up to the present codes or address it by getting a variance for one reason or another.
Given the setback issue and the fact that it's not a residential structure, inhabitable structure at this point, it would have to come back to the planning commission for it, so it wouldn't even be a staff-level concern, it would be a public hearing. Regardless, it would get noticed, but, I mean, it'll be a full public hearing.
Right. Yeah, and so I think, I think the standard clause would be appropriate, from my point of view, for the protection, but it would just be, you know, like typical code-compliant issues, it's a complaint-driven issue. So if there is an issue, then, you know, the mode of remedy in that would be a call to the planning department, and that would be your, that would be how you'd rectify the situation, and you'd be on solid ground. So I think, I think with the standard clause, I think we're good. With the proposed clause, there's some real, the language that you propose, there's some real ambiguity in some of the terminology that you're proposing. So I would go, I would tend towards the already-vetted clause, because I think you'd be, have better protection all the way, and speaking to the, to the public comment. As for the project, I think they took, they took our comments and, you know, listened to them and came back with a decent solution. The one thing I'd just recommend, and I, you know, always do or always think about this, is, you know, with that west roof line, the west roof, you've broken it up a little bit more, so some of the, you know, the plumbing vents and stuff, I imagine this, you know, the way it looks is this is going to be a scissor truss, so you have the attic venting. I would just push all of the, you know, the plumbing vents to the east side, so you could put solar on that west side, and, you know, keep the rest of that roof line clear for the addition of solar panels at some future date, if you're not going to do them now. So, just a construction, just a blurb on the construction, you know, methodology on that. Other than that, that's, you know, I don't, I don't see a problem with this.
I also am very much pleased with what I perceive as the improvements in the design, and I will enumerate them, because they're pretty obvious, but I like the new design. I also think that with respect to the secondary residence possibility, that this particular rear structure in its current location and boundaries isn't likely to, you know, meet the standards that we will establish or that the Morro Bay ordinance will establish, and so I'm confident we can, we can address that appropriately. My way of suggestion, I'd just like to suggest that, if they haven't already given some thoughts to, you know, permeable driveways and water reclamation and solar panels. to, you know, permeable driveways, and water reclamation, and solar panels, and that sort of stuff. And then the only other thought I had is with respect to its continued use as a studio. You know, typically, we think a studio is producing art of one sort or another, which is typically visual, or a hobby room, things like that. But it also can be audio. And so I'm thinking if somewhere in the future becomes a studio for a rock and roll band, you know, that might be a little problematic. So I'd opt that we put some kind of a, and I'll leave it to other people who know things about this, but some sort of a, you know, maximum decibel level that might be audible from, you know, from the neighbor's property, something like that.
Okay, but it's already covered. We have a noise ordinance that covers it, so.
Okay.
And nuisance waves would be covered, too, so I'm thinking band playing in there would probably not meet our ordinance requirement.
Fair enough. It might be a little loud.
Well, I would like to say that I appreciate the changes in the design. I particularly appreciate the fact that this is a, this is an authentic house, you know, it's siding on the front, it's siding on both sides, it's siding on the rear, it's not, it's not a Hollywood set house that has, you know, stone and tile and gilding on the front, and then plain stucco on the other wall. So I think that's great. I think there's a, there's a genuineness to that that is to be applauded. One, one thing I did notice on the plans, bedroom number one doesn't appear to have a closet, which means that it's probably not, legally speaking, a bedroom. Am I missing that?
Yeah, right there, that's a closet.
Oh, okay. It's, here it says dresser, but.
Oh, dresser?
Yeah.
We're going to put a closet there.
Yeah. I just think in terms of, you know, resale in the future, that seems to be a perfect place to put it, yeah. So, so that's great. Now, in terms of the studio area, what, the way I interpret it is that currently, we have an accessory building, which is the same as a shed, or a barn, or, you know, chicken coop, whatever. Not habitable. And what I, as I understand the deed restriction, it basically says it's got to stay that way, at least until we have a new ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units, a new process that would allow it to go forward. We don't, and the way I see it, as, as part of putting that ordinance together, we're going to have to look and see what situations make sense to allow ADUs and what don't. And if this doesn't make sense, then that will, that's what the ordinance will say. As I understand it, we don't even have to allow, the state does not even allow us, does not even require us to permit ADUs in all areas of town. There, you can say, this area of town, we're not going to have any ADUs, period.
Yes, there's fines required for that, but yes.
Yeah. So I think all we're saying here is that we're putting this on hold until such time as an appropriate general rule for the city is devised. So I, I kind of think that's the right approach, you know. If, if it's inappropriate and intrusive for this unit to become an accessory dwelling unit, then it's inappropriate and intrusive for other similar units to become ADUs, and that should be, that should be part of the law. I think this is probably a case study that we should carry forward, as we consider a new ADU ordinance, and, you know, keep this in mind. But with, other than that, I don't, I don't have any major difficulties with the wording as it exists. And I certainly am willing to support the project. So are there any additional comments, thoughts? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll attempt a motion here. I move that we, we approve a resolution of the Morro Bay Planning Commission approving the conditional use permit, UPO-465, to allow an additional, in addition to the non-conforming residence, residential structure at 462 Arbuthnot Avenue.
We have a motion on the table?
A second.
And a second? Do we have any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think this is, this is the indication, this project was an indication of, of the work that we did in design guidelines, you know, on the residential design guidelines. So, once again, I'm, you know, this is a push for why we need commercial, you know, in our commercial guidelines, so.
I'd probably, I'd probably to review the residential guideline sometime as well. Go back and take another look at it, see what we might need to tweak. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, then, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Luer?
Yes.
Commissioner Engraffia?
Yes.
And Chairman Teft?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Sadowski.
So then we will move on to new business, item number C1, which, which involves discussion and appointment of representatives to work with the, with the Harbor Commission's Measure D Working Waterfront Subcommittee. And I believe, Scott, are you going to lead us on this?
Yeah, so we had this at our last meeting, but we had a little bit of a hiccup with the agendas being posted online versus the ones that we posted around town, so we had to bring this back at this meeting. This item is for discussion and appointment of a subcommittee to address ambiguities in Measure D, and to maybe move forward the working waterfront concept. These are items that are on our goals and objectives for this fiscal year. These are, so, and they're also items that the planning commission has discussed in the past. In fact, we had a meeting, I think, back in 2016. Eric was here at that meeting, where we had a conversation about some of the issues that we have with Measure D, and how they've been, and how we've implemented Measure D over time. And I think there was a consensus that there was some ambiguity, and it was worthwhile, it was worthwhile to spend some time and to develop what we might be able to put into our general plan, LCP update process, probably in the zoning code, how we could put some clarification language that would go in there, and maybe even include some language for the working waterfront. And that's been an ongoing conversation at the general plan advisory committee level. And so we did take this item to the city council on July 11th, and city council authorized the formation of the subcommittee from the planning commission to work with the ad hoc committee from the harbor advisory board, to develop some language on both accounts. You have the staff report that, that our harbor director, Eric Endersby, prepared for the council to review at that meeting. And includes some, some work that had already been done by the HAB in there, so if you read through that, you saw that. And so that's what we're here for this evening, to have, so you can have a discussion about which of two members of you might like to be involved in that. We're probably looking at a couple of subcommittee meetings between the planning commission subcommittee and the HAB subcommittee meeting, and then a, probably, we will schedule a joint meeting, once we have language, of the HAB and the planning commission, the full members of both. Likely at one of our regularly scheduled meetings, though, probably at planning commission, since we have more than harbor advisory board, but that's yet to be determined. Eric and I haven't worked that out, but once we do, we will schedule dates, you know, for all of that with the subcommittee members, so we can work that timeframe out. We're not anticipating many more meetings than that, I think. And I don't know, Eric, do you have anything you want to add to that, or just take questions? Okay? Eric's here to, you know, to pack me up on this. He's, he's been dealing with it a lot more than I have, so I always appreciate the help of, help from one of our fellow, fellow department directors. Questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, Scott. Questions for staff? Comment?
I guess my, my only question is, these meetings are not going to be public.
They're actually likely going to be subject to Brown Act. City attorney's office has informed us that that's the case, so it will probably be noticed in, so there'll be ability for the public to comment. At them, yes.
Okay. So they will be open, and with public comment?
I mean, the idea is it's going to be a working, you know, sort of forum for the two groups to get together, and that's the way it's going to function. But certainly, in the beginning, we could take comment, and even at the end, probably if it was desired.
When do you anticipate, like, these meetings to be held? Are you?
Over the next couple, over the next couple of months.
Okay, but time-wise, are you going to wait until, like, after people get off work? Or is it going to be more likely, like, our WRFC meetings, which are three o'clock, or?
We're going to work with you all to see what the best timeframe is for it.
So that hasn't been determined yet?
Eric and I have flexibility to, you know, accommodate times that work for everybody, and that's kind of what we'll try to figure out for you. We'll probably poll you first, and see where you're at, what kind of times you have available, and then we'll schedule the meetings accordingly.
Okay.
Because since we're only going to have a couple, we need to have everybody there.
Yeah.
So, so that's kind of the idea.
Yeah, I just, oh, go ahead. No.
Do you have the basic parameters of what the, what you're looking for, through these meetings?
So, I mean, I think we had a, we had a couple of specific ones in there, the rights.
Yeah, and thanks for, Commissioner Teft, and members here for having me and considering this. Harbor Advisory Board's been working on this working waterfront initiative for the last goal year, as well as this goal year, and trying to, Scott and I landed on the idea of getting this incorporated with your process, so that we're not working independently, and we can work with each other instead of sideways. So they made a couple of recommendations. They, council-directed the harbor advisory board, ad hoc committed the harbor advisory board to come up with a mission statement, working waterfront mission statement, which they did. They did a couple add-ons to it, in terms of land use, and, and what area to be considered. And then on Measure D, they recommended two areas of what they consider to be ambiguities to be addressed in the general plan, local coastal plan, zoning code update. So those are really our primary missions to accomplish with these two committees, subcommittee, ad hoc committees getting together. We don't have a real defined, nor do we really intend to get a real defined work program, other than what the HAB has started with, and what they're recommending. Bring it to the planning commission by way of your subcommittee, and just start hashing it out, and take public input, and see where it can go in terms of incorporation in the general plan, local coastal plan. In terms of the question about public meeting or not, like Scott said, we, we, I had initially not envisioned these to be public meetings. I anticipated we could have possible public participation in these ad hoc committee meetings, but not public meetings. City attorney analysis was that if a couple members of PC get together, a couple members of HAB, you've developed a Brown Act committee. When we brought this to the council on July 11th, we did have some criticism from the public, that you're trying to do things from closed doors, so obviously, I, I've not tried to do things, maybe not obviously, because we had that comment, but I'm not trying to do things, HAB's not trying to do things behind closed doors. With regard to Measure D, we want to make this public, because that's the process, and we want good language put into the GPLCP. So a Brown Act noticed, agendized meeting would be, completely suit that and help that process along.
Eric, do you anticipate that the working waterfront area will be the same as the Measure D area, area that's currently covered by Measure D?
The harbor advisory board's current recommendation is the working waterfront area covers the entirety of our waterfront, from basically Target Rock down to the State Park Marina, and then they've divided it up into three sections. The commercial fishing working waterfront area is obviously the Measure D area, then you've got, because their definition, at least their envision of the definition of it, is working means not just landing fish and catching fish, it, retail, restaurant, all the other activities that occur, those are people working on the waterfront. There's no model in the nation, or even in the world, for working waterfront. Working waterfronts have been defined as, as hotel sectors, in some places, I think Florida is cited in here, and Rhode Island. They're what a community wants to make it. So that's their recommendation, and I envision the PC and HAB getting together and talking about, and coming to a joint collaborative agreement on what it can be, and it could be any or all of the above. Yet to be seen.
Could I expand on that question? So, in, language is kind of a cumbersome thing, you know? So, when Measure D was written years ago, the operational definition of a working waterfront, I assume, was when they, when they looked at it north of Beach Street, would be like a commercial fishermen, people that have to get commercial fishing licenses. People that have kayaks, they, they work along the waterfront, but I assume that they would be considered a working waterfront in the people that wrote, that wrote Measure D's mind. However, I look at, like, when you look at the waterfront, you've got that, what's that outfit that does all the cranes and stuff?
Associated Pacific?
Yeah, Associated Pacific, that's, that's a, you know, they work up along there. Then there's also fishing docks by, or fishing boat docks by the ramp, you know? So when we look at these different things, and this is something that I'm sure your, the subcommittee would be looking at, but how are, you know, to, it seems to me like, you know, when, when we start redefining what was originally defined as working, and then change, it's like, are we changing the goalposts there? Are we, you know?
I, I don't think so. I think, I wasn't there when, when Measure D was enacted. Measure D, I don't believe working waterfront, quote-unquote, was, was the genesis of it. The genesis of it was the, seeing the waterfront, the entire waterfront in Morro Bay, where there had been more commercial fishing and recreational fishing activities occurring, those things slowly getting pushed out by restaurant, retail, and all the things we see now, and the, and the belief was, and the fear was, and it's a real fear that, oh my God, this is just going to keep right on going, the commercial fishermen are going to have nothing left, because the other things make more money. And the pressure on the leaseholders is economic to convert over to the other uses. So they enacted Measure D to protect recreational and commercial fishing. I don't think they, working waterfront, quote-unquote, was necessarily the driving force or impetus of the AD behind it. It was commercial fishing. So this working waterfront concept is a little of a newer concept, I think, when it regard to Measure D. I think Measure D is by definition a working waterfront of sorts, but I don't think working waterfront is exclusive of fishing, or needs to be exclusive of fishing.
It also sounds, yeah, it sounds like the concept, too, that the HAB developed for that is really, like you had said earlier, it's pushing it along the entirety of the waterfront. So separate from measure, working waterfront, Measure D over here, Measure D area is part of the working waterfront. I think it's basically how they're being treated, so. And the things that were, the language that we're looking to maybe help along in the Measure D language, Measure D language is a fairly small paragraph, but there's, you know, there's, there's some words in here that relate to the uses that are okay there, and it talks about primarily, you know, and it talks about incidental there, too, and what do those things mean? Because if you're not primarily serving commercial fishing fleets, and you're a boat haulout facility, is it going to primarily serve the commercial fishing fleet, or is it going to serve recreational boaters primarily? It's probably going to serve a majority of the recreational boaters, just because that's the numbers. And then, so, it's what seems like it would be consistent with Measure D, I mean, if you took it literally, might not. And so those are the things that we're really trying to, we'll try to define through the zoning code, LCP processes, saying, hey, these are kind of what we think is okay here, and what's not. Doesn't mean, we're not trying to change Measure D, we're not trying to go back to a vote of the people about Measure D. We're just trying to, I think, have a clear path forward, because right now, things have changed over time, and there's been this back and forth, and you can see that evidence based on what's in the Measure D area right now. And some people think it's fine, some people don't. And some people think it's fine, some people don't. So it might be better to write down what we think it means and go down that path versus people accusing us of, you know, flip-flopping all the time on it. Put it in the code, that's what we're doing.
Thanks, Scott. I, and I, I think that it's a good idea personally that you guys decided to make this public, in a public forum. That way, you know, there's a lot of people that have a lot of passion and concern with that, but I think that you'll get a better, robust dialogue with it being in a public forum.
Yeah, no, I agree. And bringing PC's expertise to bear with the HAB's expertise to bear, which are different experti, expertisees, I think is a good working model to hash this out and come up with some good policy and direction and guidance. But like Scott says, we're absolutely no intention to reinterpret or change Measure D. We just, as he says, you know, it's been implemented over the years in certain ways, and some people think it's been implemented fine, some people have issue with it, and we'd like some clarification on policy implementation and have it, you know, a little more definitive so we can not be wrestling with these things as much. And you're right, publicly, the more publicly you can make it, the better and get good public involvement as well.
I think it's a kind of an interesting safeguard, really, because it seems like the working waterfront fishery sector, not scene, it's explicit, the fishery sector corresponds to Measure D, and then they're imposing some additional protections by calling the middle section of the embarkadero, the visitor section as also working waterfront, and then what is further south, the commercial area, as a working waterfront, so that we might have some input into, you know, preserving the waterfront aspects of those areas. So, I like the idea.
Those aren't set in stone, obviously, and that's why we're coming together to start working on these things.
Yeah.
But also seems like we need to plan to leave it open enough that we can plan for future activities that we can't foresee right now, such as, you know, wave generation maintenance. We've got a wave, we've got a, you know, already a federally approved field where they can set up wave generation machines or wind, or wind generation for, you know, for some of the proposals that are coming forward. It's also, I think it's important to note, too, that this is the only safe harbor between Monterey and Santa Barbara. So, you know, that's, that's an important distinction that we need to, you know, we need to keep. And, you know, some of our, some of our revenue for the city may be coming from some of these uses that we, we don't currently have, but should, you know, you know, propose, or not propose, but, you know, be open to have them fit in with our present mix to consider.
It strikes me that you've got two different things going on here. One is the interpretation of Measure D, which I think is very important, okay? I think, I think most people kind of in general have a good idea of what Measure D was supposed to do. It's when it gets down to specifics that things can get muddy. And Measure, let's face it, Measure D has a lot of holes in it that need to be plugged, you know, one way or the other. They either need to be plugged or need to be made explicit so that everybody knows about them and says, okay, I can do this. Working waterfront, on the other hand, is a much bigger project, in my opinion. And the antecedents for that project include our current general plan, land use element, our current zoning ordinance, the waterfront master plan, all of which would need to be wrapped into that project. So I, as I hear, what we're talking about right now is only the first of those, which is the interpretation of Measure D. Is that correct?
No, I mean, I think the intent is to, is to put some language to working waterfront. I mean, that's been, you know, that certainly, as you're aware, because you're the chair of the GPAC, a discussion that's brought up often, it talks about working waterfront, but we don't have a working definition of what that is. The concept here is to kind of put something together for that. And so that's what the, and the HAB is, you know, tasked with that through our council goals and objectives. And so, and because we're updating our general plan and LCP and zoning code right now, we're trying to make that happen. So it doesn't make sense to, to not include the HAB, because we're going to be coming up with language and just work through the GPAC, say, or just work through the Planning Commission. That's why we're bringing our land use authority folks together with our Harbor advisory folks to help us form what that could be. Because, I mean, it's something we constantly, it's constantly brought up as part of, in the update process, but we have no definition for it right now. And so that's what we're trying to sort of achieve, I think.
What we do have, I mean, what we do have is a lot of allowable and not allowable land uses. We have development specifications, we have height limits, we have lateral access requirements. There's a lot, there's a lot that's on the books right now in terms of the southern two sections of the quote, "working waterfront." And so, I mean, in terms of, in terms of defining the purpose, in terms of coming up with some, you know, some statements as to why this is being done this way, I get, I mean, I get it. I guess that would not be huge, but it seems to me that the specifics of that are going to have to work out through the general plan and through the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, because we're doing that. I mean, we're describing the uses through our, I mean, generally through our general plan and LCP, and then more specifically through the zoning code. And so they'll work their way through that, but if we're going to, it'd be nice, before we get to the zoning piece, which we're not, we haven't quite started on the land use piece of zoning. If we can get this kind of boiled into that process, then if we can come up with something that everybody agrees, like, that sounds pretty good, then we can make sure that our policies that we're implementing through our zoning code make sense with that. We want them to be cohesive and connect, and that could be the lead-in section, you know, to those policies in the zoning code. Or it could be a generalized, more generalized statement in the general plan, and then we're implementing it through the zoning code. But we'd like it to be consistent, and now's the time to do it because we're getting ready to start the zoning code piece. We don't want to be three-quarters of the way through with that and not have this done because then we'd have to fill it in at the end and then go back through and make all the changes throughout the document, which would not be an efficient way to do it.
Yeah, and the timing is ideal for it. And I think the HAB kind of, you guys and Scott and Community Development, you're the experts on zoning and land use and code and how all that stuff works. The HAB's going to give you a sense of flavor and taste and color and feel and how they think it ought to be and what ought to be incorporated, and leave it to you guys to figure out how to mechanically weave it into the process, and hopefully we come up with some good output out of it to get into all of the documentation, help us all work.
Eric, seeing as we have you here, how is this going to inform, you know, you're responsible for most of the leaseholder agreements and stuff. So how is this going to inform future leaseholder agreements, or how is it going to affect present future, you know, present leaseholder agreements?
Going into the future, it will inform me as I go into lease negotiations or lease amendments in terms of allowed uses and permitted uses in the leases, and make sure they're harmonious and working together with the code and with the waterfront master plan, that kind of stuff. As far as existing leases, it's really going to be most operative in the Measure D zone. Where it's going to come into play is redevelopment, and let's say for kayak horizons, there's one that's an old one that hasn't redeveloped, and somebody comes in with a proposal, and we've got new working waterfront type implementation and policy guidelines in the GPLCP. It'll help in us developing a project to bring, start bringing forward to Scott and his folks for redevelopment. In the Measure D zone, obviously with some clarification on the Measure D language, it's going to help us with all sorts of different approvals, whether they're GAFCO proposing to do something, or Morro Bay Landing proposing to do something, or a sublease approval, or whatever. It'll help, hopefully, give us a little more definitive policy to go on because all we've got to go on right now is Measure D, and as we've said, there's differences of opinion in how it's implemented. So I think that's where it's, the, to me, the working waterfront is more of a, there'll be some hard and fast implementation things that play into permits and operational things, but it's more of a, and almost a little more cultural than anything, I guess for lack of a better word, where the working, the Measure D is going to be more policy and land use implementation and management.
You know, it's interesting because I read the packet that I received several times, and it's, I could kind of figure out what the ad hoc committee was being asked to do with respect to Measure D in that area. And I sort of, in my generalist kind of approach regard, the middle section is sort of a free-for-all in terms of water-related activities, but the, but the problematic area was the southern end, the commercial, where I imagined you would have to decide, you want to encourage commercial in water-related activities, but what does that really mean? Does that mean when someone comes with a proposal that's not commercial, are we at the point where we would say no to that because it's, in other words, how restrictive? We want to encourage commercial activity in that southern sector, but how restrictive are we proposed to be? And that's the real question, mindful of the fact that, you know, we can't mandate any of this development. People have to sort of come, and it's got to be financially viable and to say no to some development because it should remain commercial, and if there's no commercial prospect, that's what the, I think what the real problem is going to be. So why am I saying this? So I was hoping that what we were asked to do remained very general so that when given the specifics, we could try and balance, you know, these things.
Yeah, and I don't see, I don't see the working waterfront, let's say it stays those three zones. Like you say, the middle zone's pretty mixed. I mean, it's got commercial fishing, it's got all the visitor serving, it's got Associated Pacific, it's got all kinds of weird things in there. I don't see the working waterfront components of this, and if we keep it in those three zones, being as restrictive as Measure D currently is for the Measure D zone, where it says, "commercial recreational fishing," and leaving some flexibility. The southern zone is kind of an oddball. It's historically had more commercial use in there. You used to have the old, you know, Orville's old landing down there, the fish landing, the dock's now gone. Boatyard's still there, but the shell of its former self, and you had a fuel dock down there. Mostly, and even the slips in front of the, what's the boatyard now, started out as primarily commercial fishing type folks, and the old fuel dock was a co-op, commercial fishing co-op. And then there were some other slips or docks along in front of Bay Shore Bluffs as well between there and in Morro Bay. So there's a fair amount of commercial activity down there, not necessarily commercial fishing. Some people often tie them together, but I think the commercial label down at that zone was for all the other commercial activity as well. And it's a bit of an oddball because it's morphed away from that in recent years. You've, you know, you don't have a fuel dock anymore and probably never will. It doesn't make sense to have two fuel docks in this town, and probably never will again. The boatyard, depending on where, we end up with our other boatyard initiative, you know, the owners are there just kind of going along because it works, and, you know, it works. I don't know how permanent that'll end up being. I'm working with that landowner right now to try and figure out what they want to do. So, and then the commercial fishing dock's gone and will probably never come back down there. It just didn't make sense, and so it's kind of morphed away from that, and that's a good point, something we'll have to grapple with going into the future of this, and is that what we want to be, a commercial zone? Most of that use is moved either up into Measure D or spread along the waterfront now.
I, I'm sorry. I just, well, number one, I'd just like to say, in my opinion, Eric has done a remarkable job of sort of managing the Area D area up there in the absence of good specific guidance. I mean, I congratulate you because you've, you've sort of found a middle path, you know, what's appropriate and what's not appropriate.
Thank you.
My concern is that, as you know, Morro Bay in the past has had sort of swings in its, in the orientation of the council and to a certain extent, the population. And so that's why I think it's important to get something specific down on paper. And I would just encourage this group as it moves forward to think about, again, to think about the holes, to think about the arguments that could be made with the existing Measure D. For example, a development that primarily, that is primarily for the purpose of facilitating licensed commercial fishing. I could come in and argue, I need to build a hotel in the Measure D area because the revenue from renting those hotel rooms will support the dock fees and fuel costs for my fishing boat. Now, to me, that's an outlandish argument, okay? I think probably to you, it's an outlandish argument as well, but that needs to be down on paper someplace to say, this is not, this is not what Measure D means. Because the reality is, it's not what Measure D means, you know? And the other, the other big thing that I, the other big issue that I think needs to be dealt with is the idea of, the concept of grandfathering. What does that mean? Where does, I mean, we have had, we have had uses that have been dormant for two, three, four, five years, and then somebody comes in and says, oh, it's grandfathered because it was here five years ago, you know? Is that, you know? So to a certain extent, I think, I think this is an opportunity to get into the specifics, you know, to consider, to consider the problems that have arisen under Measure D in the past and to sort of, sort of, you know, correct some of those situations.
Eric, since you're here, I just want to, I keep throwing this out when I have a chance, but the Eelgrass Bank, when you guys are talking into Harbor and having a Eelgrass Bank someplace so we could address, address, you know, address that issue, it's for, you know, for leaseholders having to deal with that, and that might be, I feel there might be an area down in the south area on this side of the, you know, the harbor that might be a benefit, and, you know, there's, I can't remember the legislation, but there is legislation in Sacramento to deal with that. So just, I hope that you guys keep that in mind, you know?
We have an Eelgrass Ad hoc Committee you want to join in on. We are looking, you know, we do have also a council goal objective to look at, but, you know, as you know, all the development along the waterfront pretty runs pretty squarely into Eelgrass. And in recent years, you know, the Eelgrass were down to these single-digit acreages. Well, now it's kind of coming back, and it's a pendulum as well. And so we're grappling with, from the leaseholder standpoint, how to try and establish a process that's a little more, a little less unknowns and more knowns in it instead of the seesaw that they're currently in and not really knowing what they can do and what they can't do, and changing the project, and changing the project, and changing the project, looking at something that'll maybe along, more along lines of what Newport Beach did a couple of years ago, and they've got their own policy that the regulators adopted, and they're able to manage it a little differently than the California Eelgrass policy. So we are, that is on the radar screen as well, whether it'll come down to a banking system or something, yet to be seen, but we're starting down that path.
So we have strayed a little bit beyond questions, but I would like to take this opportunity to open public comment period on this item, even though there don't seem to be any humans left in the room. So I will open public comment, and seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the committee for discussion. Should we, should we move on to nominees? I'm going to nominate Jerry Luer. I mean, absolutely, has the greatest expertise and greatest familiarity with the harbor and harbor-related issues.
Yeah, my wife's going to kill me, but this is one of my primary interests and one of the reasons I moved to Morro Bay. So I'd like to, you know, help with what I can.
So all those in favor of appointing Commissioner Luer? So all those in favor of appointing Commissioner Luer, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Five zero. For second nominee?
I'd just like to see if Joe would be interested in, you know, I think his, you know, his expertise with terminology and stuff would be helpful. And, you know, and also, he's one of the other members here that isn't on, that doesn't sit on another subcommittee. So if that's, I think, I think it's good to get multiple inputs.
Sure. I'm not quite sure exactly what my contribution would be, but no, I'm very much interested in that and I'd, it's a cliche, but I'd consider it an honor to participate in it, sure.
I agree. I was going to suggest Joe as well. I think that Joe's perspective and command of the language as well is going to be very beneficial to the group.
So all those in favor of appointing Joe Ingrascia to the subcommittee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. So we have our two, oh, and by the way, Scott was telling me, it's really going to be more like 15 or 16 meetings.
Should we look to see if there's anybody interested in being an alternative in case something happens that we can step, that person can step in? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, Michael, I didn't know if you had the time to be involved in this.
I'm actually in a professional transition to retirement. It's going to be, it's going to be taking place through September, so I don't have a lot of time in August, but toward the end of the fall and to next year, I'll have more time for things. And so I would, I would like to look at other opportunities that we have for service. I was not able to participate in the general plan or the water reclamation facility, which were very dear to my heart the last few years. And so as I'm moving into part-time teaching for five years, I'll have more time.
Congratulations on that.
This is probably a little early.
Yeah. Believe me, it's a painless transition. So all those in favor then of appointing Commissioner Lucas as an alternate, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
That was great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. We'll be in contact in the near future once Eric and I get a chance to sit down together and come up with some dates and times, and we'll just send them out to the subcommittee so we'll check your availability and then we'll set meetings moving forward from there. Okay?
Eric, is, what time does the Harbor Commission, Harbor Advisory Board meet currently?
Same time, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay.
First Thursday's of every month.
Okay, just curious. Okay, we have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move on to planning commissioner comments. Any comments, agenda items?
I do have a comment, and I would like to, I've asked this the last meeting, and I'm going to ask it again because the, we had another WORF CAC meeting canceled, okay? The Water Reclamation Facility Advisor Committee was canceled again. We are right now on a relatively short timeframe to, with the help of the regional board, looking at a potential water reclamation facility west of Highway One on a Tuscadaro Road. And I would like to have a discussion item regarding looking at some of the options of that, of putting that, putting a water reclamation facility there and some of the land use changes and zoning issues that we're going to have to potentially look at and maybe getting the planning commission to discuss that, not to make any decisions, but having a open discussion and then having some public input on that discussion at the next meeting. I think that, I brought this up last time, and I respectfully, you know, waited so I can deal with it at the WORF CAC meeting, and it's canceled, and it was canceled. This is kind of going to, is becoming a systemic issue with me because I had several, you know, before the election, before the last election, I had brought up issues and they canceled the meeting. So I think that, I think that this, the planning commission, and it kind of goes along with what we're doing here at the waterfront, we're looking at zoning, we're looking at, you know, at land use, I think it'd be, I think it's appropriate.
So my issue remains the same as it was last meeting, that last time this was brought up. This is not something the planning commission is tasked with. We have a, we have the WORF CAC and we have the Public Works Advisory Board that are specifically tasked with dealing with these by the city council. So I, I mean, I think at this point, you don't have authorization to sort of weigh into the fray on this, and so I have concern about that. Meaning the city council, we have goals and objectives, and those are the things that we're supposed to be working on. This is not one of those that the planning commission is tasked with, other than as it moves through the process, you'll be seeing permitting for it, you'll be seeing environmental documents for it, you'll be seeing those types of things when we go through the EIR process, I mean, we get down that road at some point, not too distant future. So I do have, I do have the concern.
We have, we have, though, we have, we're tasked with zoning, we're tasked with land use, okay? And we're given an opportunity now to take a look at a plant with the help of the regional board, to work collaboratively with the coastal commission on a plant near the existing plant. Near, the operation of definition of that means no lift station, okay? Because if you put in a lift station, you've now, you're going to have to change the LCP amendment anyway. What I, all I'm asking for is an open discussion with the planning commission to discuss how this zoning, how the land use would look.
Scott, I realize this is not, not in your bailiwick, but do you have any update as to what the current thought is with regard to?
So the council has tasked staff and the consultants with going and addressing this issue. I would imagine they canceled the WORF CAC because they didn't have anything to report back because they're still gathering the information that goes along with it. I haven't had a specific conversation with the Polite Works Director on this item specifically. I was not aware that the WORF CAC meeting was canceled, but probably just didn't notice that I didn't get the agenda packet sent to me. I probably just didn't realize that I didn't receive that recently. So I don't exactly know where they are, they're at. I know that they're working through that process right now, and they're looking at the various sites to go through a vetting process. And I thought they were supposed to bring it back through WORF CAC for recommendations, so unless it's going directly back to council. I'd have to touch base back with the Polite Works Director to find out exactly where they're at with it, because I haven't spoken with him recently on that component of this. I've spoken with him about other pieces of it, but not that.
Just given how expensive this whole proposition is and how sensitive it is, I wonder if the city council would be interested in just what the inclination of the planning commission was, you know, just to kind of a?
So you as a commission can ask questions of the council. You're able to do that. It might be good if you focused on one person to send that inquiry to the council, but you're able to do that. And the council can, if they want to, as a, as a future agenda item, schedule that discussion and then give that direction. That's how things get funneled back down through the process. The council will often do that and tell us to go work with the planning commission to resolve issues or what have you. That's normally how this comes forward, especially when it's, it's a task that we're already working on and we already have specific bodies that are dealing with it. Sort of, again, I can't overstate how uncomfortable I am with us going outside of those lines because that's not what we're tasked with. Although it will be something that you do see, it's just, that's not, we're not, we're not supposed to be working on giving direction about any of that type of thing unless the council is interested in us doing that. And the way you get them to tell us that that's where they would like the planning commission to go is to inquire with them and get the ear of one of them that might be interested in the input from the planning commission at this stage, and then they would bring it forward at the end of a council meeting for a future agenda item. That's the, that's normally, that's the appropriate way for these to work, given council's the one that directs us on what we're supposed to work on. Sorry, Commissioner Zdowski.
Other thought?
Yeah.
As soon as we have Eric here, for the multitudes of people that are still watching, could you give us an update on the haul-out facility and the progress on that?
Funny you ask. We'll be discussing, look at the Harbor Advisory Board agenda, which is posted, where's a little blurb in our staff report about it. The RFQ we put out didn't have any responses, although I just got news tonight that potentially one of the people that was interested in the past maybe missed the boat or didn't see something, so we'll be going back to them. So we put out RFQ for design, build, operate services to see if anybody's interested in any one of the three or all three. Got some interest back from a couple engineering firms, but not enough for them to submit anything. I think there's just not enough city movement or commitment on that triangle lot, if that's where it is to go, for an engineering firm or anybody to come in and propose anything. There's just too many unknowns and a cost of a fair amount of money to put together a proposal and do the research. So Harbor Advisory Board will be grappling with it on Thursday night to see where the ad hoc committee may want to go with the further recommendation on it.
Could I, can I ask you something, Eric? Why such a small area for a haul-out facility? I mean, why, why are we not looking at something where we can haul out a commercial fishing boat and have people working on it? I mean, a nice size area.
That's the idea, is up to 70, 75 tons. That's a pretty big boat. It's just about everything in this harbor.
Okay, but in that, that area, my, my understanding that the area for the haul-out facility is relatively small, it's?
It's about two acres.
Oh, okay.
And we did, we did, you know, back when, when we became owners of that, when that was still in progress but being buttoned up, I think by the former city attorney, when it was looking like we were going to become owners of that, that's when the Harbor Advisory Board kind of relatched onto it and realized, hey, we may have, because one of the biggest issues of the boatyard in the past 20 years effort of it is, where do we do it? We don't have any open land that we own right now that would really be good for it. Ideally, previously, it looked up Coleman Drive a little ways out towards the creek, or the Barcadero out towards the creek.
Oh, okay.
That area fell apart for ownership and environmental and other issues, and so didn't have a good place to do it. And all of a sudden, the triangle lot falls in our lap, and fall in our lap is years of negotiation, but the triangle lot became ours, so it became a logical place to look. We commissioned RRM back in 2015 to see if a boatyard as envisioned, the size and scope that we had envisioned a boatyard here could survive and operate on, could fit, along with the Maritime Museum, along with public parking. RRM went from basically somewhere in front of Harbor Hut to Beach Street, took the triangle lot, squeezed the boatyard in there, squeezed the Maritime Museum as the Maritime Museum Association envisions themselves, and reconfigured all the public parking in that zone, including a haul-out ways between the South Tepee and Stax Wine Bar, going across the street through the parking lot and into the yard. How would it all fit? Because it was generally assumed that we probably didn't have enough room for all three uses in there.
Right.
Public parking, which has been something, you know, especially if we pursue the promenade prospect or project and take out some parking along the waterfront, we need to replace it somewhere, replicate it somewhere. So the triangle lot became an obvious place for that to land. Maritime Museum, longtime project the city's been interested in. Now the boatyard, could they all live in there? Kind of generally assumed that probably only two can fit. Well, RRM redesigned and then looked at it and did sort of what we call mini master planning exercise to see how it would all fit. Lo and behold, boatyard, Maritime Museum, 50-ish dry storage spaces for trailer boats, and an additional 30 to 50 public parking spaces could be created out of that entire zone with some creative, basically wipeout islands, curb cuts, everything the way it is and look at it as a clean slate. Can you squeeze all that in there? And sure enough, and you get the triangle lot all the way from the lot as it is now, through the trees to the Barcadero Road, consider that usable, like I say, all the islands, all the, all the, all the parking the way it is now, don't put anything in stone, just redesign it. And they did, looked at it with a fresh eye, with some angled back-end parking and a few other things, and they squeezed out more parking and got a Maritime Museum and got a boatyard into it. So that's why it's there.
One of these days, I'm going to ride my bike over there and maybe we could talk and you could kind of walk, walk me a little bit.
Yeah, let me know. I'll bring the drawings.
I'm having a hard time visualizing all that stuff.
Yeah, it was, it was a nice plan. And then Eric, have, you know, have we considered as further enticement, you know, maybe, maybe allowing a hydraulic lift trailer and maybe utilizing that, the RV storage on the north, north end of the, you know, north of the creek, over on the other side of the, like 40, 41 West, there's a, I think there's a city-owned RV storage over there for additional dry storage and smaller lift boats, you know, in the 30-ton or something range.
That, over there, that's all under lease? That RV park, it's Moro Dunes RV Park and all that, the RV storage back there is all part of that lease? It's under a 20-year lease right now?
Yes, long-term lease, unfortunately.
Oh, okay. I thought the city had control of that.
It is, it is owned by the city, but it's?
It's under lease for another 15, 14, 15, 16.
Last time we looked at it. So, yeah.
Okay.
There's some issues with that.
Yeah.
And who knows what will happen with Dynegy if it sells and the city throws out its wish list to the potential new owner? Anything's possible over there, who knows? Could be a game changer, but that's yet to be seen, it's still.
Yeah, maybe there's an opportunity to renegotiate that lease with the present owners or something, if that would be a viable inducement to get the haul-out facility, you know, for a long, more, more boat storage would probably be a little bit more lucrative than a, than RV storage, but.
They're both, whether you're, whether you're, for just pure dry storage, not a boatyard, working on a boat, whether it's boat or RV, I think the rates are not dissimilar, at least in this town. And it is, you know, the, the dry storage always has been identified and is currently identified as a good short, medium, and long-term cash maker because it's minimal development and it's good, good payback on it, so potential of, at least now, and one of the things the Harbor Advisory Board's probably going to consider this week is, do we start dedicating some of the triangle lot to dry storage to start generating some revenue to move forward with some of this stuff, whether it's feasibility studies or whatever? Because it's, it's certainly not getting a heck of a lot of use by the public right now unless, you know, Giovanni's brings in the dive boat for a month or so or something like that that puts things over there that's relatively unused.
Dry storage doesn't necessarily have to be one-story, right? There are two- and three-story facilities for dry storage.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's not super prevalent here on the West Coast yet. They're building a dry, a stack, it's called stack storage. They're building one down Day and Point Harbor as, basically as we speak, it's pretty darn popular on the East Coast, where, yeah, you've, it's kind of like a VA system where you call up the place and you say, hey, I need my boat in at 12 o'clock on Saturday, and they go pick it up from the fifth story with these crazy tall forklifts and go drive it out and drop it in the water, and you show up 12 o'clock on Saturday and your boat's ready to go. Then they take it out and put it away and you're done. It's very popular on the East.
Kind of like a boat vending machine.
Kind of like a boat vending machine. That's good. I like that.
But that, I mean, that, that, that might provide more economic return from a smaller land area. Okay, Community Development Director comment, Scott?
I don't have anything this evening. I, I don't think I have anything to report back at this point. Sort of have my head buried in all things, general plan updates lately. We have a lot of stuff going back and forth between the consultants and so, met with them today to, so maybe it is, I'm just saying, met with them today with Eric. We, we sat down and we're talking with them about the, was supposed to be part of the Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan, we broke it out. Instead, it's the lateral access piece on the back to get across there. And so we're, we were working through and answering some questions for them, most of them related to whether we can tie these things to leases and not, and whatnot. So Eric was prevalent and played a lead role in answering most of the questions. I think they had about 16 or 17 of them, so. I've been, you know, taking up his time all day today for stuff planning related. his time all day today, for stuff planning-related, so, anyway, that's all I have.
Have things calmed down in terms of the alleged violations at the panorama site?
Calmed down, I mean, I think, you know, we had the, and you have a piece of correspondence from Carol Chillsdale there, I don't know that it's calmed down, I think people in that neighborhood are still uncomfortable with the way that the applicant or the owner is operating, rightfully so, so we're in, you know, from a status standpoint, we're still sort of waiting on the applicant to provide us some additional information back, we have information requests into them for various things, we didn't investigate the complaint related to the trimming of the trees, and as mentioned at last meeting, they did cut trees during nesting season, and they did enter the esh area, but from what we could tell in a site visit when we went out there, there wasn't heavy equipment in there, and they're able to go walk through that area, that's okay, you can walk into it, and you can probably trim and remove down trees and things like that, even in those areas without doing damage, the problem is, they shouldn't have been doing it during nesting season, even if it was right up to the end, the letter from Carol Chillsdale notwithstanding, you know, the statement I made at the meeting previously was related to, was a factual statement in that, had they waited to go through the process, they could have trimmed trees, you know, after the bird nesting season started, you're allowed to do three of them, and they went and removed more than that, so, we'll be working that in massaging the replacement of trees, and maintenance, and potentially some restoration of the esh area, because it's not in great shape, as part of the, you know, conditioning for the project, given that they went in there and were trimming when they shouldn't have been, and took some trees out when they shouldn't have, I think it's probably appropriate that they can restore and improve some of that esh habitat area, given that they shouldn't have been in there, and chose not to call us or contact us when they did that, so, but anyway, we're still working through that right now, so.
Just a thought, I would imagine that if the current applicant owner ultimately sells it to another, will carry it through the next stage of development, that developer will almost certainly have some very preliminary talks with you about the history of the property and the relationship to the neighborhoods, et cetera, et cetera, is that correct?
I find it that almost, it never, anybody that's looking to purchase something that significant is always going to walk in and find out what the city has to think about it, because, you know, if there's issues, you know, then it makes the property, you know, less, it's less likely that somebody would want to purchase it, so if there's issues that are outstanding, you let people know what those are, those all, all those types of things go into negotiation processes for purchase, obviously, how far they've gotten through an approval process, what's all the information that's been, you know, developed to this point related to environmental studies and all those types of things, all go into the mix when it comes into those types of things, it would be rare that someone would just buy it without talking to the city, even much smaller pieces of property, that's pretty rare, that, any sort of commercial property that's on the market, almost two A one, and people come in and talk to us first about what it is, unless they're buying a business that goes along with the store, in which case, maybe they don't care so much.
Okay, so my point is that, you know, any lingering suspicions on the part of the people who live in the neighborhood, or perhaps even suspicions on any sort of advisory boards or observers and whatever, is really relevant, and if someone could tell the current applicant that, he should be aware of that.
Oh, we have that conversation on a regular basis.
Good, good.
Yeah, the bull in the china shop approach doesn't work very well in this town, so, maybe the applicant's sort of figuring that out, I think, at this point, but anyway.
And they haven't actually started hauling out stuff yet, have they?
They, no, they, I think they did take, they took a couple of the trees down, they're not there anymore, I think there was some pieces of chopped-up tree there, but they might all be gone now, too, I don't know.
But I'm talking about the loads full of tank.
Well, no, we're still, we're waiting to come back to the planning commission, you guys gave them a whole bunch of requirements that they needed to meet to come back, and so they've been working on some of the studies, some of them they've adequately addressed, some of them less so, and so we're working back through that, we're getting closer, though, I think we're going to be recirculating the environmental document, because we have new mitigation measures, that'll be in relation to noise impacts and things like that, so, when you have new mitigation measures that relate to new potential environmental impact, you have to reroute it to the clearinghouse and to get comments that way, so, we'll be doing that, and that was, those are all things that were brought up and requested by the planning commission when we last heard the item, so, we're getting a little bit closer, there's just, there's a little bit of disorganization on the side of the applicant, I think, in organizing and putting together and getting everybody moving in the same direction, they don't really have a project manager, it's just the owner, and I think maybe he has other irons in the fire out there, so it's, as he circles around to it, he does a whole bunch of stuff, and then goes and does whatever he does, and then, kind of, it's sort of like that, it's a lot of hurry up, and then we don't hear from him for a while, and then hurry up, and we don't hear from him for a while.
Okay. With that, then, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting here at the Veterans Memorial Hall, on the Ides of August, August fifteenth, at six P.M., thank you very much.